Dr. Taub.
Here.
Dr. Hans.
Here.
Ms. Root.
Here.
Mr. Landsman. Mr. Furman. Ms. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Torres. Mr. Lindemere.
Here.
Ms. Amy Dyer.
Here.
Dr. Guadalupe.
Here. Thank you. All right, our folks who are covering public comment, is there any public comment? Our first opportunity for public comment.
We do not have any public comment online or in chat, but I do want to remind people that either option is available if they have a question for the board or a comment they would like to make.
Thank you, Christine. All right, so our, this is our first meeting of 2021, our committee of the whole meeting. So, welcome everyone. I hope everyone had a great time off and here's hoping for a great 2021. We will go ahead and get started with our revenue update with Anya, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Well, I want to check, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, just want to make sure. I talked without anyone hearing me. So, just the biggest update we've had since I talked to you last was related to the direct care wage extension. So, that did get extended through the end of February. As you guys remember, you all approved in our budget amendment number one, the extension through the end of March. So, what this really means is the expense doesn't change at all, it's really the revenue that changes. So, the department will be funding January and February of that. So, that will be one of the items that's included in budget amendment number two, which you will see in March. So, that will offset our costs a bit, so it kind of saves us some money. So, that extension is through the end of February and then obviously we'll keep you posted should we hear anything additional, but we are already planning to extend through March regardless. The other thing really is, you know, with the beginning of the new year, our year-end processes really kick into high gear. I did mention that in last week's board update related to provider reconciliations and account reconciliations and moving into our state reporting and our audit has officially begun. So, finance will be working on that for the next couple of months and I'll keep you updated on anything else. So, with that, I can take any questions.
I'm not seeing any. All right, well, thank you, Anya. Appreciate it. All right, so we will go ahead and move into our next item, which is our Provider Network Team Quarterly Update with Jillian and Adam.
Good afternoon, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, can hear you.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the board this afternoon. I am Jillian Trumbull, I'm the Director of the Provider Network Team here at OCHN. I have met most of you, some of you are newer faces, and I look forward to getting to know you better. I'm going to give Adam Hamilton the opportunity to introduce himself quickly and then we'll get into the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here. I'm Adam Hamilton, I'm the Manager on the Provider Network Team.
Thank you. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. I am not going to spend very much time on the next two slides, this is just a brief look at the Provider Network Team members and you'll see that most people are identified as Provider Network Analysts, but we do have some service coordinators on the team and people specifically working on a grant related to employment. Next slide. And this is just a brief team overview. The team oversees our contracts and relationship management with Provider Network. We oversee the vast majority of the provider contracts for OCHN. Certainly, most of you know Christina Nicholas, who oversees the SUD network, but core providers, vocational, ABA, specialized residential, hospitals, long-term care agreements, and a number of other ancillary types of agreements, all sit with the Provider Network Team. Next slide. And today, we're just going to give a brief update on three initiatives that the team is currently working on. One is related to the implementation of provider credentialing, which Adam will talk about. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about standard operating procedures specifically related to our hospital agreements and business continuity and COVID-19. Next slide, and I will turn it over to Adam for a couple of slides here.
All right, so I'm going to provide a little bit of an overview as to what we've been working on related to credentialing our provider network. So, this really involves a process where we look at providers who are seeking to enter the network and we make sure they meet certain standards before we contract with them. And then, this also involves re-credentialing providers who are currently in the network to make sure that they continue to meet particular standards. This is in response to regular auditing that OCHN underwent with Health Services Advisory Group in fiscal year 20. So, that's, you'll hear me say H-SAG periodically, and that's Health Services Advisory Group. And that's an organization that MDHHS contracts with and they audit PIHPs. So, we've received some feedback from that audit that we could enhance our credentialing and re-credentialing processes for organizational providers. The goal of enhancing these processes will really be to help make sure that OCHN fully meets all of MDHHS's requirements, all of H-SAG's requirements, and then, of course, we have NCQA requirements that we're also trying to meet now and stay in compliance with those. And again, so this is really focusing on credentialing new providers who are seeking to enter the network when we do procurement. And then, re-credentialing, which will happen on a biannual basis, providers who are currently in the network. Well-developed credentialing and re-credentialing processes ensure that OCHN has fair and equitable standards for determining which organizations can participate in our provider network. These processes help to ensure that providers in the network are capable and competent to provide services. And, most importantly, you know, the work that goes into this really makes sure that those services or those providers are able to offer high-quality services to individuals who are receiving services in our provider network. In response to H-SAG's findings, we decided we should draft a new procedure. We called that the Provider Monitoring, Credentialing, and Re-Classifying Procedure. This was, this work was completed by an internal work group of OCHN staff and we submitted it to H-SAG in August of 2020. And along with that, we submitted a schedule for re-credentialing the current provider network. H-SAG accepted this response as adequate to meet their requirements. And throughout the first quarter of fiscal year 21, a group of OCHN staff piloted the new procedure. And we credentialed a small group of new CLS providers and we re-credentialed a small group of providers who are currently contracted with OCHN. Members of the Provider Network Team and other internal stakeholders will continue working on refining these processes and procedures. We believe that we can be more efficient and we want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can do to make sure that we are in alignment with the department's requirements for us for credentialing. We've also, yes?
I don't mean to cut you off, I just wanted to see, there's a question in the chat, is that, would you like that now or later on?
Um, you can give me the question now, I can open the chat real quick, too.
Okay. It just says, doesn't NCQA require us to provide a re-credentialing process relating to our core providers?
Yeah, there are a lot of different standards. Getting echo on my end, I'm sorry.
Hopefully, that's not.
There we go. Yeah, so, I mean, there are a lot of different standards that are going to affect the oversight of the provider network. And so, because credentialing is really an important process that helps us gather and maintain a lot of information about the providers and their operations, NCQA is going to, NCQA standards are going to be really important to consider as we go forward. We want, we don't want to do anything that, in developing this process or in these procedures, we don't want to do anything that would conflict with those or not meet different NCQA standards as well.
So, Adam, I'm wondering if Mr. Landsman's asking more about practitioner credentialing, which is required by NCQA and Marquita's team does oversee. Mr. Landsman, this is more specific to our provider credentialing processes. I'm not sure if that differentiation is important for you.
You know what, I think you guys just answered it very well.
Okay, thank you.
And I put it in the chat so you could see what it was before I asked it, that's all. I was going to raise my hand later on.
No, we appreciate that, I was trying to decide whether to respond in the chat or wait for the question slide, so thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and that's a good point, Jillian. The, a lot of the workaround credentialing associated with NCQA has been practitioner credentialing as opposed to organizational provider credentialing. We have a little bit of new jargon to learn around this so that we're clear in delineating between the two, because it does get a little bit confusing, certainly. And please feel free to stop me, I can't see the chat as I'm looking at notes to make sure I cover everything while I'm doing this, so just stop me if you'd like me to answer any more questions along the way here. So, again.
It does look like there's one more question in the chat, and that's just asking for a copy of the credentialing process to be sent to the board. So, I believe that the credentialing process itself is not 100% finalized right now and certainly, we can provide any of that information via, we'll follow up with Dr. Lawson and Dana Lazenby on the best way to get that information to you.
Yeah, that's correct, and that's kind of what I'm, what I'm speaking to right now is our ongoing efforts to continue refining this process. There are, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 providers that need to be credentialed on a biannual basis, and of course, we've done some procurement along the way, so we've added some new providers. It's quite an undertaking and we really started off with the intent of piloting the process we had, recognizing very early on that we would need to realize some efficiencies and look for some ways to improve the process as we went. So, that's, we know, we started fairly small and have already been able to make some improvements to the process. There's also a work group that is looking at some of.
I think you froze, Adam.
Well, I'm still here, I'm not sure if I can do anything.
We can hear you now, Adam, you froze for a minute, yeah.
All right, I'm not sure where I left off, but I was essentially just saying that we realized that we could make some improvements along the way, we selected a small group of providers to re-credential, we actually went through initial credentialing when we did some procurement of CLS providers, and we realized that this would teach us some things about what we could improve and how we could be more efficient with regard to this, this process. And we have a Provider Monitoring Committee at OCHN as well that was formed about a year ago, and so, we're also kind of looking at that committee and some processes associated with that to make sure that the, on an ongoing basis, the providers who are currently in our network are being monitored closely as well. If you'd like to advance the slide, that would be fine. Regarding funding, we did not add any administrative costs associated with these changes. All the tasks associated with credentialing to date have been distributed among current OCHN staff. Okay, happy to take additional questions if there are any. Okay, and I'll stay on if people want to wait and ask questions at the end or if people think of anything.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next slide. I'm going to jump back in and I'm going to talk a little bit about standard operating procedures, and these are specific to our hospital contracts. In the middle of last fiscal year, the Provider Network Team was given the opportunity to take on the hospital contracts, so certainly, that's been balanced with COVID-19, which we will talk about next. But one of the things that it really allowed us to do was take the opportunity to look at our operating procedures related to hospitals, look at our contract language, our single-case agreement process, look at our rates, and make some decisions about where we, where we want to go in terms of hospitalization, or hospitalization contracts, rather. So, this goal is in process, not all items have been completed and are in varying stages of completion, but some of the things that we've done are, we revised the claims process specific to enhanced rates, and certainly, this wasn't just the Provider Network Team, there were representatives from our Budget and Finance Team, Information Technology, Clinical Team, all helping to support any changes or improvements in efficiency. But we were able to streamline the claims process, we were able to create, the contract document itself hadn't been changed in many years, so there were some variation among hospital providers, there may have been minor differences in contract language, so we've been able to take a look at that contract language and make sure that we have standard standard contract language across hospital providers. Some of the things that we are currently doing, we're looking to revise the single-case agreement process, and that's the contract process for if somebody is utilizing or requires inpatient hospitalization and they end up in a hospital, that's not part of our contracted network. Sometimes, that happens if a person is maybe visiting someplace up north and they end up needing inpatient hospitalization, it can happen in other situations as well. And we're looking at our, at our rates, some of the feedback we get consistently from hospitals at the beginning of every fiscal year is to ask for rate increases. Some hospitals will say that Oakland pays a lower rate than other areas of the state, so we're really taking a look at that and trying to make some decisions about whether a rate model makes sense, and those are things that haven't been done yet but are in process. So, this is important, because even though it seems kind of boring, having good relationships with hospitals really helps us to be able to work with people. Hopefully, hospitals want to work with Oakland, so they're more eager to accept people who require inpatient hospitalization, and it really, when we have streamlined processes, it allows us to divert our attention to, to the outcomes specifically to people receiving services. So, next slide. In terms of budget and funding information, the costs associated with all of the things I just mentioned are administrative costs that are included in the administrative budget, which is Medicaid. Hospitalization itself as a service comes from both Medicaid and general fund, so services are covered under, under both fund sources depending on the individual's insurance status. Is there any questions on that? Are there any questions?
There is one question in the chat, Jillian, you want me to read it to you?
Oh, I do see it, thank you. Is the rate paid by other counties public information that can be reviewed and compared? So, it is not public information per se. Dr. Guadalupe, the information, contracts are subject to FOIA that PIHPs and CMHSPs hold, so that information can be FOIA'd by people who are interested. We have been able to reach out to our, our contacts at other PIHPs and CMHSPs and are starting to get information about the rates that they pay. And I, and I don't want to provide too much information at this point about where we're at, because we're in process and I can't really say where we compare, but we have had a lot of feedback from other parts of the state with regard to their rates. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sure. Are there any other questions before I move on? I have a feeling the next topic is going to be slightly more interesting to the board, and that is business continuity and COVID-19. This annual plan goal is administration and operations, obviously, as an organization, as a board, as a community at large, we quickly shifted to a new way of doing business with the start of the pandemic. And part of that has really been us as an organization needing to take a look at what our plans are and helping support providers and making sure that they have continued operations and ultimately, that people receiving services continue to receive services at a time when, you know, there's increased worker shortages, people are trying to keep themselves safe and healthy, keeping people that receive services safe and healthy. So, we have implemented a lot of different ways to provide support, and I'm going to spend some time on that a couple of slides from now. I did want to spend some time on the next two slides looking at our current COVID data. So, if we can move into the next slide. So, this data was pulled on January 5th, so I do have an update that's accurate as of today, but this shows what we've seen in terms of COVID-positive diagnoses among people receiving services since the onset of the pandemic. This data is reported via MYIN, so it captures anybody who receives a positive diagnosis with a lab that reports to MYIN. So, it may not be 100% accurate data, there are some labs that don't report, but it's a pretty good picture of what we're seeing for COVID-19 positives. You'll see, obviously, in April and May, we started to see some, some positivity, then, you know, several months over the summer, we're pretty quiet, and then you start to see the uptick and a, and a pretty big surge in COVID-19 positivity in November and December. The light blue, or actually, the dark blue is people who are receiving services in specialized residential settings, the lighter blue is individuals in any other living arrangement. So, I looked at the data for January 11th, and we currently have 11 people who've had a positive diagnosis in the month of January, one individual in a specialized residential setting, and then nine in other living arrangements. If you want to move to the next slide, this shows the distribution by core provider agency, and right now, we're working with all of the core providers so that they have access to this Power BI dashboard as well, and then, they can actually drill down to individual level detail so that they're able to follow up with people who they are providing services to who have had a positive diagnosis. And I look at this almost every morning at about 9:00 AM. Next slide, sorry. So, some of the things, and this is just a handful of things that the organization has worked on, and while I'm giving this as part of the Provider Network Team Quarterly Update and has been a big part of what we've done for the past little bit, certainly, we have not done it alone, we've done it with immense amounts of supports from other teams, other teams in the organization, and with a great amount of support from the provider network as well, so I just, I want to make sure that that is acknowledged. In terms of personal protective equipment, at the very beginning of the pandemic, when PPE was so hard to come by, I had a very assertive contracts and procurement team who was able to locate and procure all sorts of PPE. We've been able to provide PPE to our provider network, both on a quarterly distribution basis, which our facilities team and Christine Burke have done an amazing job organizing, as well as if a provider has a positive diagnosis within a home or a place where they're providing services and is in need of some enhanced PPE. We also established a process in order to approve hotel stays for direct support professionals who wanted to be able to continue working but had fear about going back and forth between their work location and home, maybe because they had somebody at home that they were living with who was medically compromised, or fear of sort of bringing COVID back and forth. We've been able to approve hotel stays for people who are in that situation and want to continue working. Since March, we've actually approved 39, I approved one since this was submitted to the board, so we've approved 39 total stays. We also have established a contract with Pontiac General Hospital to use some quarantine space, so it's a section of the hospital that's not used for medical services, and they have allowed us to be able to have people quarantine. Providers are responsible to provide direct support professionals, but the space is available if they are trying to keep people sort of quarantined from each other within a living arrangement. 10 people have used PGH since March of 2020. We've also had some other quarantine space used at the very beginning of the pandemic, two of the providers who operate, who operate respite homes, so Jark operates a respite home, and then McComb Family Services and MRC operate a respite home, they offered those homes to us when they were closed for respite services in order to allow people to quarantine. One of our providers, Mentors of Michigan, also had a vacant space that they allowed us to use so that people could quarantine. So, we've really had just an amazing amount of support and people kind of come to the table with ideas to make sure that individuals are getting their needed services, are able to be kept as safe and healthy as possible, and for operations to just be able to continue. We do have regular specialized residential and vocational provider meetings. At the beginning of the pandemic, they were once a week, now they're every other week, and that allows us an opportunity to talk about anything that may be happening with regard to COVID-19. One of the recent meetings was a presentation that I think was really well-received, I personally enjoyed it quite a bit, from Honor Community Health regarding, regarding the COVID-19 vaccine. We had 84 Provider Network representatives in attendance at that meeting. This is just sort of a small sampling of what has gone on since the beginning of the pandemic, and I imagine will continue to go on, hopefully, not too far into the future, but at least through the duration of the pandemic. Next slide. The fund source has been entirely Medicaid. Right now, providers are cost reimbursed, so we shifted to cost-reimbursed contracts at the beginning of the pandemic. We've continued that for quarters one and quarter two of the current fiscal year, and we will continue to monitor that on a quarterly basis, and we'll continue with cost reimbursement if we need to into quarters three and beyond.
Jillian, there's a, there's a hand up if you.
Thank you, and next slide is for questions. So, Dr. Guadalupe, do you prefer to call out questions or?
No, I don't see whose hand, oh, Dr. Hans. Go ahead. Dr. Hans, did you have a question?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the question is about vaccination. The vaccination for high-risk group has been available for quite some time now, and I think now we are in Phase 1B. Actually, I got my shot yesterday, and my question is regarding how many of our citizens have been vaccinated, especially in the specialized residential care.
So, I don't have an answer for you in terms of how many people served have received vaccinations at this point, that's not data that we have at this point. What I can tell you is that our specialized residential providers in particular were able to sign up via the state website and were linked to pharmacies to distribute vaccinations, for vaccination distribution, rather. We did talk about it at our most recent provider meeting, which was this past Friday, and providers reported that it's going well, that most people receiving services, some reported up to 99%, some reported everyone, but a high percentage of people are opting to receive the vaccine. Unfortunately, fewer people who are direct support professionals opted to receive the vaccine, so we are having conversations about how we may be able to provide some more information about vaccine efficacy and safety to direct support professionals and try to help people to feel more comfortable with that. And so, I hope that answers your question a little bit.
Yes and no, but I have a follow-up question. I understand that hospitals are now providing vaccinations, and with honor, do we have any arrangement with them or PGH or anything? Because I understand, and I'm not sure if it is true or not, but there, these hospitals are being given some incentives as to how, number of, number of vaccinations they perform every week, because there is a backlog. I myself was surprised, I got an email from Henry Ford Hospital Saturday night to reg- I got an email from Henry IV Hospital Saturday night to register for vaccination. And I got my vaccination yesterday afternoon at 1:00, 2:00 o'clock. So it is available. I think it's just how efficient we are in developing our plans as to how to get our people vaccinated.
Dr. Hans, I, I don't have a lot of information on that. I do see in the chat that Dana is giving a COVID-19 vaccination update. So I suspect she's probably going to be better equipped to answer some of those questions.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, I can, I can actually give you the quick update now. And Jillian is absolutely correct. Our providers signed up for vaccines with MDHHS, who linked them to a major pharmacy. So providers reported as of Friday that they're starting to receive vaccines. So like Jillian said earlier, 95% of the people we serve are choosing to receive the vaccine. But the, on the sad side of it, our direct support professionals, only 40 to 45% are agreeing to get the vaccine at this time. So we're still going to work with them to get them the additional information and support, try to address any questions or concerns they have. And I, I think it was great that we did the, like, the lunch and learn or the sessions with Dr. Hamadi from Honor's Health, who they're definitely partnering with us in this. And so they were able to answer a lot of questions for people. And it sounds like we really do need to have another informational session so that the people who actually serve, the people we serve and support, are okay with getting the vaccine. So individuals who qualify are under the priority of 1A. So we were able, again, to reach out to the health department directly to receive that vaccine. So people over 65 and other health professionals will qualify under the provider, right, right? I can't get variety out. Well, you know what I'm saying, priority, I'm sorry. 18 are directed to reach out to the Oakland County Health Department. And we actually are setting up some meetings so that we can talk to them directly about how we can best serve the people within our network. The other part of it is that as a Phase 2 is approaching, we already know that Oakland County Health Department is out of the vaccine already. And all the appointments are scheduled. They're not offering any new appointment as of today. But also as of today, they were supposed to receive an additional shipment. So I think part of the delay for some people that are getting the vaccine is the availability of enough vaccine so that people can get the first and the second dose that they need. So part of what they're doing, the plan, is to make sure that people get that first shot, the second shot is available, so they're not setting up any appointments if the first and second dose aren't available to those people in those slots. So in the second phase, we're going to continue to work with Oakland Health and also Honor's to discuss how we can assist, making sure that everybody within our network has the vaccine. That would include our workforce, board members, building tenants, and the community as a whole. And we're hoping that we can set up a clinic at our Troy location when we're all set to do that. As it relates to tracking, that's one of the things I absolutely am in support of. And we've been working, Diana, our CIO, is also working with the state in this MidCurse, which is the Michigan Care Improvement Registry. And they have all citizens' immunization records. So our hope is that we can get access to that data in real time so that we will know when individuals are getting the vaccine and those individuals that are up for their second dose, and making sure that people are getting the first and second because we want to make sure that that happens. But also, we want to look at all vaccinations because I know flu was a big issue. And it always is a big issue this time of the year, even as early as October. So we were really pushing for that and wanting to get that data as well. So not only will we have the COVID vaccine information, we'll also have the flu shot information and make sure that people are receiving that as they need it. And I'm sorry, Jillian, I took up too much of your time. But we also have the tracking record. And I was happy that Jillian already went over that data as well. So that's my update about the COVID vaccine. And I know it's, it's really complicated and the information that's getting out there can be very confusing. So we want to make sure, like Jillian said, and I believe Nicole reported on last week, that we're meeting with our providers so they can know where to go and what to do to get that, that vaccine for the people we serve. Any other questions about that? Okay, thanks, Jillian.
Thank you, Dana. That actually was the end of our presentation. So any other questions? And otherwise, we will mute ourselves so you can move on to your other business.
I'm not seeing any other questions. So thank you very much, Jillian and Adam. It was very informative and we appreciate your time and putting your, your information together. So thank you very much. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is the QUAPIP with Marquita and Stephanie.
Good evening. I am here today with our clinical director, Stephanie Wilson, to speak with you about our QUAPIP, Quality Assessment Performance Improvement Program, and also our year-end quality improvement report. This is an activity that we are required to do annually. It is, as you can see from your board packet, both documents are pretty comprehensive. And it's inclusive of all quality improvement activity that happens through our quality structure throughout the organization. So my team is responsible for pulling the information together and documenting it to ensure that we are meeting all the requirements. But the work that is reflected in the QUAPIP is inclusive of all teams within the organization. Next slide, please. So what is the QUAPIP and why is it required? It's the foundation of our QI program. You will hear the terms QUAPIP and QIPD used interchangeably. Quality Improvement Performance Data is what the QIPD acronym stands for. And both these documents include the minimum components that have to be in a quality program that's mandated to the states from the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, and it's passed down to the PIHPs through our contracts. And it includes the minimum assurances that have to be met in a quality program. Next slide, please. So what's required of the board? The board approves the QUAPIP on an annual basis. And throughout the fiscal year, the board receives periodic reports on QUAPIP activity. QUAPIP activity aligns with our strategic plan. It includes information on our performance improvement projects and actions and results. And what you have in your packet is a summary of all that information that highlights all the activities of the QUAPIP. Moving back to the periodic reports that the board receives throughout the year, just to tie it back into the presentations that staff make to the board throughout the fiscal year. From the presentations to the Committee of the Whole and the past fiscal year, back in November, there was a report that staff presented on access to therapy, outlining the number of days and the connections to the performance indicator. In February, there was a presentation on the DLA assessments. Also in February, there was a presentation on Sentinel Events, which is a component that's included in the QUAPIP. And then in March, our medical director, clinical director, and our quality improvement manager provided the board with a presentation on our Sentinel Event Review Committee and the activities of that committee. And in April, there was a presentation on care coordination, which highlighted the work that is done by our nurse case managers in coordination with Medicaid health plans. And then in July, there was an overview from our clinical team. The clinical team has a responsibility for UM activities, complex case management, and the Improving Practices Leadership Team. In terms of presentations to the board, one of our committees reports out to the board on a monthly basis, and that would be the Citizens Education and Environmental Committee. Boards are, our board is a prize of activity from that committee throughout the year through CAC updates. And that acronym, again, I misspoke. It's the Evaluation and Education Committee. The other reportings through the previous fiscal year, many of our reports and updates pertain to our CEO updates. We also have stories that inspire hope that are regularly included on our board committee agendas. All of our team presentations outline how activities within each of our teams contribute to our QUAPIP. In August, we had a presentation from staff on our member experience and satisfaction survey results. And also in August, we had a presentation on mandates that contribute to quality that are unfunded. And in that presentation, we spoke about HCBS, the Home and Community Based Services Rules. We talked about acute care parity. We talked about reciprocity efforts. We talked about shared metrics that PIHPs are implementing in coordination with the Medicaid health plans. And we also talked about the CIS survey. Next slide, please. So as I previously mentioned, the QUAPIP is the foundation of our QI program, and it includes the minimum components that have to be met in a quality program. Something new this year is a requirement from the department that the state actually reviews our QUAPIP and assesses it against certain elements. And, and this is a little bit of a duplication because the QUAPIP and the year-end report is already reviewed, heavily reviewed by NCQA and also by HSEG. So this is another activity from the department that is going to be occurring. And the department is requiring that this be done by January 31st of each year. But historically, this has always been a strong point for OCHN, and we haven't had any problems with our QUAPIP. We can move on to the next slide, please. In terms of policy and fiscal implementation implications, I mentioned that it's a required administrative function. It's covered by Medicaid administration dollars. It's not an optional activity. We, we are required to do this. And I mentioned that it is heavily scrutinized by external bodies. Next slide, please. So in our QUAPIP, it is structured so that activities of our quality committees align with each of these areas that are listed here that are also requirements for NCQA. So you will note in the diagram of our quality committee, you'll see a layout of all the various quality committees that we have. And then within the body of the QUAPIP and the year-end report, you'll see how each of those committees align to one of these four areas. So quality and safety of clinical care, examples of committees that align with that would be our QI Risk Committee, our Improving Practices Leadership Team, our Sentinel Event Review Committee, and our Medical Directors Advisory Committee. In terms of member experience, committees that align to that would be our CEEC, our Citizens Advisory Committee, our Recipient Rights Advisory Committee, and also the Satisfaction Survey Activity that we report out on. In terms of quality of service, committees that align to that would be our practitioner credentialing and our quality improvement committees. Next slide, please. So this is a diagram of our quality improvement structure in place at OCHN. All the committees, our, our quality committees that contribute to our QUAPIP are listed here. All the committees report up to our QI Council. That is chaired by our medical director and co-chaired by our deputy executive director. Those activities feed up into our QUAPIP, and then the QUAPIP is approved by the board. Next slide, please. So at year-end, we compile a summary report that basically speaks to the major accomplishments of each of the committees. In this summary report, we speak about goals, and if they were met, and if they were not met, what are the barriers to achieving those objectives? Goals are set for the previous, for the coming year. And in many instances, and oftentimes, those goals carry forward from year to year. They may require some slight tweaking. The summary report that is compiled from the year-end report is then used to develop a work plan upon board approval. Some of the highlights that are noted throughout the QUAPIP would be the importance of the involvement of our, our medical director. We have medical director involvement in our Outcomes Improvement Committee, our Medical Directors Advisory Committee, and then also in our QI Council. It is also important that we have strong input from practitioners within our network. We get that from our Clinical Directors Committee and also from our Improving Practices Leadership Teams. And then there is also a heavy emphasis on the HEATUS measures. So that outcomes from the HEATUS measures are reviewed and discussed at our Medical Directors Advisory Committee and also at our Integrated Healthcare Committees and also at our QI Committee. And the year-end's report is a public document. It is available on our website. And the location to the year-end report is listed here on the slide. Once we've gone through the review and pending board approval, the year-end report for FY '20 will be posted on our website. And we can move to the next slide. And at this point, we would like to go over and discuss with you some of the highlights that occurred throughout the year with our QUAPIP. So in regards to the QI Council, we are sharing of treatment data with Honor and the Medicaid health plans to support coordination of care. I mentioned that we're also reviewing our outcomes on the HEATUS measures and discussing what barriers are in place and what we need to do to move forward, to improve in that. And we're also discussing interventions that, and the Medical Directors Advisory Group, discussing interventions that need to be implemented in order to move the needle to continue to show improvement with that. And at this point, I want to let Stephanie step in to talk about the Improving Practices Leadership Team.
Good evening. So yeah, as Marquita had noted, some of the highlights from the Improving Practices Leadership Team that I want to touch on is for FY '20, all of the protocols that are included in the Utilization Management Manual are updated and reviewed. There's a review process that this committee utilizes. And so that helps to ensure that we're able to get feedback and incorporate that into those protocols for those annual updates and reviews. And it also ensures that we are keeping in line with those NCQA guidelines and making sure that everything that needs to be included for that is also in there. This group also works on continuing to implement, monitor, and look at the fidelity related to evidence-based practices. So one area to highlight for FY '20, over this past year with evidence-based practices, we were able to have a training for family psychoeducation, which is an evidence-based practice. We had several of our providers participated over the summer. This was provided through MDHHS. And although it ended up being a virtual training, we received a lot of positive feedback, and our providers are working on implementing that practice over this next fiscal year. Also to highlight the DLA 20, so that had continued. All the trainings that were scheduled were able to be completed for FY '20. We did have to adjust slightly. And typically, those trainings had been occurring face-to-face. We did adjust, and those are available still on an ongoing schedule. We are just completing them virtually now. So that is the one change. This group also helped to provide members to participate. Trishas Zizamo and myself have been working on the family-in-person centered. Trishas Izambo and myself have been working on the family-in-person-centered planning training. And for FY '20, we held focus groups to work on developing that curriculum. This group helped to identify individuals at the provider level that had interest in participating, as well as pushing that out so that individuals served and also their family members were aware and able to express an interest if they were interested in participating also. For the Integrated Healthcare Committee, to highlight a few of those year-end updates, the Nurse Case Managers did hold 12 monthly meetings with eight individual Medicaid health plans in Oakland County. So those occurred each month for last fiscal year. This committee was also able to provide some ongoing education. They have 10 recorded webinars that are available on OCHN's website, as well as they're able to be viewed through OCHN's YouTube channel. So those are still available. Some of the topics that were covered in those prerecorded videos included things like diabetes management, chronic pain, COPD, and asthma, various different topics. So again, those are still accessible and available through those channels I had mentioned. For fiscal year '20, also, there were 32 referrals that were made for the Complex Case Management Program. 14 of those qualified for that program, and eight individuals were able to complete the program in FY '20. There were still four individuals who are currently active in that program at the end of that fiscal year, and the others had declined at that time to participate in the program. Moving on to the Sentinel Event Review Committee, some highlights from that committee. That committee was able to review and analyze 801 critical events that were reported in FY '20. Critical events can include different things such as arrests, a death, an emergency medical treatment, or a hospitalization related to an injury or medication error. Of those critical events that were reviewed, 11 of those were determined to be Sentinel. And for all Sentinel events, root cause analysis or RCA is completed. So all of those root cause analysis were completed and reviewed by the Sentinel Event Review Committee. Those are completed within 30 days of the event. And for the Medical Directors Advisory Group, as Marquita had mentioned, they do review of our HEATUS measures. So one of the HEATUS measures that is reviewed at this committee is adherence to antipsychotic medications for individuals with schizophrenia. We did well on this HEATUS measure. For the last two quarters that were reported, we were much higher than our targeted goal. So that was a positive for that measure. We also review adherence to antidepressant medications, both in the first 84 days of treatment and then those subsequent days. We have shown some improvement on this HEATUS measure. We need to do some continued work to get to our goal that we're reaching for. But this group, as Marquita noted, does take that feedback, and then they are able to incorporate ideas on how to make those improvements for this upcoming year. There is also one additional measure related to diabetes screening for people with schizophrenia and bipolar. We're currently at 71% with that, and so our goal is 80%. We are doing some work. Our nurses at OCHN are doing follow-up calls and also sending out follow-up letters to work to remind individuals if they haven't been able to do that already. And we're hoping that those steps will help to meet our goal and get us a little bit closer to that 80% over this next year. This group, the Medical Director Advisory Committee and Group, also reviews annual policies that are related to the individuals who attend. So they were able to review those policies and provide feedback for FY '20, as well as provide outcome reports on the progress of the Outcomes Improvement Committee. So there was a spring report in FY '20 that came out related to the Outcomes Improvement Committee. And a positive from that report that was noted is we continue to see a decrease in hospitalization for individuals who are presented by their provider network that they work with at that committee. And I will turn it back to you, Marquita.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. I'm going to talk about the remaining committees. The first one is the Member Experience that focuses on satisfaction of services with persons served. Back in October, we had a full presentation to the board from three of our staff that spoke on the outcomes of our member experience activity. We noted from that that there is opportunity for improvement in a couple of areas. So staff will be working with other staff to, within the organization, to develop plans to be able to focus on where we can target activity to improve outcomes there. That is an NCQA requirement that we do that every year. In regards to IPOs audits and Home and Community-Based Services reviews, IPOs audits were previously, they are performed and completed annually by the clinical team. And the quality team would pull together the analysis of the audits. Overall, our score for the network is 84.15%. However, in some of the specific population areas, there's a little more room for improvement. We have seen improvement in outcome scores in these outcomes as compared to previous years. Some of the areas where improvement is needed fall into the area of ensuring that preliminary plans are occurring as needed, pre-planning is occurring, and periodic reviews, and ensuring that there are no restrictions that are not required in an individual's plan. In terms of the Home and Community-Based Services Rule, the compliance date has been extended by the department to March of 2023. So in the interim, we are working with the provider network to ensure that plans of service don't include any restrictions that have not been reviewed and approved by a behavior treatment plan. We're looking to see that individuals have access to the community and that people aren't living in any institutional-type settings and that persons have the ability to weigh in on where they live. So that work is continuing, and it will continue through this year and the next year. The deadline was extended a bit due to the COVID pandemic. So we can move to the next slide. So at this point, we can answer any questions. Just as a recap from what we went through, that, what we reviewed with you, that covered highlights of our QUAPIP and our year-end report. At the board meeting next week, we will be asking for approval of the QUAPIP by the board. So we can answer any questions that you have at this time.
I see Judy has her hand up. Judy?
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to touch on the audit for the PCPs. Are they still done randomly? Is it a random poll for the audit? And is there any value in looking at all the plans for people who might be living together in a specialized residential setting to make sure that their plans are unique from each other rather than something that might have more similarities just because they're living together?
So I should probably let Stephanie answer that question since the audits are completed by her team.
Yeah, so we do pull a random sample of 60 individuals from each of the providers to complete the audit. So I, you know, I think that one way that we do look at that, though, also is we're reviewing the IPOs in a number of different ways also. So through clinical review and different things that may come up within our organization, we're continually looking through a chart and reviewing that IPOs for different things that may come up. And I think you make a good point. As we are looking at certain settings, we may oftentimes look at other individuals in that setting to take a closer look at that. So it hasn't been how we structured our IPOs audit necessarily, but we certainly are taking a look at that as other clinical needs or concerns or requests come up.
Okay, I think it's important to make sure that everybody is really having an individual plan. That's all. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Jonathan?
Thank you. I want to thank both you, Marquita, and you, Stephanie, for providing this insight to us. I know it's required, but besides that, helping us understand this information and what you do and how you do it, it's so very important to help us understand what goes on. Some of the challenges are the folks that receive services from us, how important it is, and the extent that you guys go through in understanding when there is a situation. And for instance, the Sentinel Events, the investigation, the effort, the timeliness. This is not, these are not trivial investigations that you do. So I just want to take a moment and say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, it's Hada. So I have a couple of questions. And first, I want to thank you so much for your presentation. It was really, really informative, and thank you for putting this all together. I think I may have asked this last year, but I still want to just understand. So coming up with the goals, like on page 21 and page 22 of your report, how do you determine what the goal is?
So each of the...
Go ahead.
Each of the committees are charged with determining what the goals would be for the coming year, taking a look at the outcomes of the previous year, and looking to determine what may need to be tweaked to address the outcomes of the committee and the objectives.
And so many of them, you know, are above, and a couple are pending, and some of them are below. So how do we compare, like with other agencies? You know, are they similar? Or because I'm just wondering, you know, it's, I've been on this committee for two years now. And, you know, if looking at the below, it just surprises me. So, but I don't know, I have nothing to compare it to. You know, other organizations, are they also below? I don't know if we have access to other people's. You said that this is online. I'm just wondering if we could look at another county's and see how they're doing, you know, just to kind of get a sense of, are we really meeting the mark?
So on page 24, I don't have that document in front of me, but are you referring to the HEATUS measures?
Yeah, I'm referring to 21 and 22, page 22, page 23. I mean, we're close, but we're below our goals. And I'm just wondering, is that just typical of the work? Or are we just not able to, you know, are our goals too high? Or are we, are we missing something?
So the HEATUS measures are requirements for NCQA-accredited organizations. And it's still a little new for us. So we set those goals to be aggressive. We want to really work towards actually improving outcomes and making a difference. And in fact, NCQA would require that. So if we are, if we're not meeting our goals, then we have to tweak our interventions. So, you know, it, we may not reach our determined goal within a year, but our interventions have to be significant enough to really show that we are making some increments. And if you look at the year over time, we are making slight improvement in some of the areas.
Right. Okay, so that's really where you're headed. Okay.
Yeah, and I think, I just want to add one more point. You had mentioned about being comparing to other organizations. So it's only required for NCQA-accredited organizations. And we, our peers, at this time, we don't have a lot of peers that have NCQA accreditation. And then the HEATUS measures are selected individually by any NCQA organization where we think as an organization, we need the most improvement. So it would be a little bit challenging to compare us to another organization.
Okay. And then just regarding the nurses reaching out for the diabetes screening, it just seems to me that a letter versus a phone call, I was just surprised at, you know, the amount of letters that were sent. I don't have it in front of me. I think it was like 700 versus calls, where it's just like 100. I just, it would seem to me that a phone call or a direct connection versus a letter, you know, may make a difference. If you don't mind me commenting on, you know, just the way the nurses might consider reaching out to the people since it's been, you know, it's on one of your charts.
Yes. I was just going to say that's an opportunity for improvement that we may take into, need to take that into consideration. But I think Stephanie was going to jump in on that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we would agree that those phone calls can be more helpful to have that outreach along with or versus a letter. And so we have been able to work on doing some expansion through the Adult Mental Health Block Grant with our Integrated Health Care for FY '21. So we're hoping that we can increase those phone calls with having some more resources for this upcoming year.
Great. And then I didn't quite understand page 42, the timeline days and the creston intakes. How is that, was that just because of COVID? It says quarter three fiscal year '20, you know, how it just dove down? Performance indicators?
Which, please remind me, which indicator are you referring to?
Okay, so I'm on performance of persons receiving an initial assessment within 14 calendar days of first request?
Okay.
And then it goes through, yeah.
I would have to check on that. I don't have that document directly in front of me at this time. But that would have been the performance noted at that time. So we can look into that and provide an update to you.
Yeah, because it just really, it says it was decreasing to 70%. It decreased. So I just wondered why, what, you know, what took place that would cause that unless someone else might know. So that's on page 42. Great, so I mean, the rest of this is very, you have a lot of information. So it's really, really, really helpful. So thank you so much.
Okay, and we would likely be able to provide you an update to that at the board meeting next week to that question.
Oh, okay, great.
And the, I just have a note from one of my staff that are responsible for compiling that data. And the department did make a change in how our indicators were compiled. And they, previously, we were allowed to remove exceptions. So if a person canceled or rescheduled, we were allowed to remove them from the calculation. The department has removed the ability for PIPs to allow exceptions now. So that likely was the result of that outcome with that measure.
Oh, okay. So you may want to add that, you know, when they send this, because I think this is going to the state, if I'm not mistaken, you know,
That's correct.
Why that took place.
Okay, we can do that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Marquita or Stephanie? I'm not, oh, Dr. Hans.
Yeah, so I have a follow-up question. Since the state changed the criteria for the standards, do they have a benchmark that is supposed to be met?
Not at this time. This is like the first year. And for many years, for all the performance indicators, because the exceptions were allowed, PIPs were doing really great. And CMS stepped in and said, well, maybe you need to look at this differently because you're allowing these exceptions. So the department, this is the first year. So a baseline is, it's, you know, it may be set at a future date, but not right now. We are still collecting data on all the exceptions and working with the, we will be working with the providers to set our own internal benchmark that we want to reach.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? I'm not seeing any. So thank you again so much, Marquita and Stephanie, for the very comprehensive and thorough presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to our next agenda item with Jonathan and Dana talking about the 2021 board agendas.
Thank you. First, let me preface it by saying we've met as an executive board, go through the various calendars to see what we need to do and how do we add additional content into our various meetings? Because I'm looking for us to energize and tool ourselves up in terms of being very active as a board. I know half our board is relatively new. So we're looking for a way to season and mentor our board. So we are much more effective in the state. One, from the, from the side that we're operating from a virtual perspective, and it's a challenge versus face-to-face to influence people and, you know, be very effective face-to-face. But in the other, that as the state becomes more back to normal, if you will, I think that they're going to focus back on redesign. There's going to be more innovation. And as we've all heard, there are financial challenges going in the state. So with all they're trying to do and less revenue. So there's a lot of things we need to do to season our board. So I just wanted to say we've taken an active look at this. As well, I'm going to cover that last bullet, which is we will not have a January study session for this month, only because we've got bylaws and orientation, and we've got the change of potentially additional board members. And so I don't want us to start down that path of either making changes to our bylaws right now or orienting our existing board if we're going to have a couple more people in the next month or two. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to you, Dana.
Okay, great, thank you, Jonathan. And it's a perfect segue from Stephanie and Marquita's report, the QAPIP, because that's one of the things that drove us to really look at our board meetings and to reestablish an executive board committee meeting where we could review the approval of agendas going forward. So what you'll see at an executive board committee meeting that will occur the first week of the month is that you'll see a board report from our chair, Jonathan. Then you'll also see an agenda that talks about unfinished business. And then we'll be able to get a report or determine what the agenda items will be for our finance or business ops committee under Eric, and then also our program compliance, which is the policy committee under Dr. Sarah Guadalupe. The other thing that we wanted to do in this board executive committee meeting is to talk about any grant development status. So it really does give us an opportunity to touch on some things that aren't often in the regular board meeting, in the COW or the general meeting. But these are things that would also carry over from the board executive committee. So also looking at advocacy and those things that are a part of our strategic plan, as well as giving any updates from the county commissioner's office. We would talk about who's going to present at the next upcoming general board meeting in terms of stories that inspire hope in the provider. So this meeting really does give us direction for the coming board meetings. And one of the things that Sheila and I are going to be working on and provide to this board is a draft of all the agendas for the board meetings that include the COW, as well as the board study session and the general board meetings. So again, with the COW, the committee of the whole, it really does integrate both the finance or business ops and the policy, the board policy committees. So we wanted to make that a much more effective and information session for this board to give them all the information they need to approve through the consent agenda, any board meeting items that need to be reviewed, and then information that will allow you to make those decisions and vote, but also to look at the budget and how we're managing in that aspect. Because what we found is a lot of things are carrying over and almost duplicated. So if we get all of our staff in their quarterly reports and as well as those other required reports that are due to be approved by this board, when we get to our general board meeting, what we will see now is the reports that are coming from the board chair and those board committee members. So that is one way that we're looking at really becoming more efficient and effective and giving that information. And then also having the public here from the board directly, as well as the staff when there are questions that may arise. So I definitely will continue to give my report during the board meeting, the general board meeting, as well as any other times there are requests for updates, such as we did today with the COVID. So again, it's really to streamline the process, have you know in advance what the agendas are for the board meetings for the year. Then also, if there are any important topics or things of that nature, we will be able to see and plan accordingly. So I think that's really important. Like I said, the next step would be for Sheila and I to provide for you agendas, draft agendas for the following year or this year that will tell you what's coming up at the executive committee, the COW, and the general board meetings. And then any study sessions that are held, what the topic will be. This will also help us prepare for the new board members that are coming on board. And then the newer members or more recent members of the board that did not get that full orientation that we will provide in February. And as well as looking at the bylaws and the board policies, working with our chief legal officer, Kalan Ali. So I don't know if there are any questions, please let me know.
I'm not seeing any questions, Dana. I would like to, to thank you. I think it's exciting to see us moving forward. I think this is going to be a lot more streamlined and organized. And I think just you had some great ideas to kind of get us moving forward in that, that direction. So I appreciate you and Jonathan's work on that to get us, get us moving in a positive direction, so.
Thank you. And I didn't do it alone, because the team had to step up. And one of the things that you'll see, I think is hopeful and beneficial, is that you'll get the departmental reports in Boardable prior to the meeting. So I left that important piece out. And that's where Jonathan and I had said that the information will be there. And so the board can review it before the meeting. And if there are any questions, you can also send those questions to us in Boardable. And we'll make sure to, or the staff and I will make sure we incorporate the responses in our presentations as we go forward.
But the whole point here is to season the whole board and to energize us. So we're very effective going forward.
So thank you all for that support.
Since we're on the topic of meetings, I have one question. I was just going to wait till a board member comment, but I think it kind of aligns in this. Late this afternoon, there was an email that came out from Bob Sheehan from Community Mental Health Association of Michigan regarding the Open Meetings Act. And I'm just wondering if we can integrate that in, because that was his legal counsel's interpretation. And I think it would be important for us to know, as we look at these agendas and moving forward, just to have our own interpretation, or if it's the same as, you know, as theirs, so.
Yes, definitely. And we just got that same communication, of course. And we'll review it and have some feedback for you all in the next week.
But I'd like to say something on that topic. And I didn't read his email or his legal's perspective. I know we have OMA, and I'm a fan of that and the transparency that it brings. Like, one of our board members is out of state. And he could have joined us and identified where he was out of state, which is Illinois. I'll leave it at that. So, and he could have participated under our current OMA situation. So I just want people to remember that just because you're not sitting at home doesn't mean you can't actively participate in our board meeting as a board member. You just have to make sure you disclose that you're not inside our state boundaries. That's it.
Thank you. All right, just want to make sure no more questions regarding this topic, comments? Not seeing any, we will move into other business. Dana, you already addressed the COVID vaccine update. Was there anything else? I don't think, you were pretty comprehensive, so I don't think there was anything.
I don't think so, unless someone has any other questions or any other follow-up items they would like me to pursue.
Any further questions regarding the COVID-19 vaccine update? Not seeing any, so we'll move on to Sheila with regards to the CMHA Winter Conference.
Hi, everyone. I sent out a poll a couple of weeks ago regarding if you plan to attend. I've got three board members right now that I'm noting that would like to attend. We would like to register everybody by noon tomorrow. So if you plan to attend the CMH Winter Conference, please let me know as soon as possible, so we can get you registered. That's it.
Jonathan?
Sheila, can you send us an email reminder back out on that? Because yes, I know it's there, and I forgot to do that.
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
You know what, this is Hadas. I tried to say yes, but then it said I needed some kind of code in order to submit my response. That was today, actually.
Okay, I'll just send an email out within Boardable, and then everybody can just respond. And I'll take who's ever on the poll. And then we also got the update on the conference details, too, so that will help to unsessions. So I will provide both folders now, or both flyers now, on the conference details. And then if you can just let me know as soon as possible. Because I think they're giving a discount by enrollee now, so by attendance rolle, so. All right.
Thank you. I would just say that I think even though these are virtual and they don't have the same level of interaction we might have with other board members from across the state and even other staff, I think it's important to actively participate with CMHA. It will provide you an amazing amount of insight as to what some of this is, what we'll see when we go through orientation, where the state is heading, which way the winds are blowing, if you will. I can tell you that between this, some of the boardworks components that are in it, that gives you an all-around seasoning in terms of understanding what we do, how we do it, how it's funded, how things are segregated, why things are important, why things are what they are, because sometimes it's not logical. So that past experience will help you really get a better understanding of how things are now and perhaps where it's going. So I'd encourage everyone to sign up and actively attend as many of the sessions that they can, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will move on to our, Jonathan, do you have your hand up? No.
Just lower my hand.
Okay, all right. So we'll move into our final opportunity for public comment tonight.
We did not have public comment this evening, Sarah.
Thank you, Christine. All right, we'll go through our board member comments. Sheila, if you could call the role, please.
Sure. Ms. Summers?
Hi, thank you. I just want to briefly thank our presenters today for working so hard to make really complex information so clear and understandable. I always appreciate that very much. And I like the energy that's going to go into future meetings of both the committee of the whole and the board. That's it, thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy New Year to each and everyone. I appreciate so much the, the presentations that were given this evening. And I hope that all is well with everyone. And I'm not going to take up a lot of time tonight. Have a good evening.
Dr. Todd?
Thank you for all the presenters and all the work you put into your presentations. And I thought 2021 was going to be better than 2020, but it lasted about five days until things blew up in Washington. So I don't know how much hope we have for the rest of the year. Anyway, Happy New Year to everybody.
Dr. Hans?
Hello. Yes, thank you for all the information that was provided today. I really appreciate it, and thank you for your work. One of the things I wanted to mention was what I'm hearing in the community is from the direct care workers is the training or their continued training that they are predominantly or 100% this year are doing online. And one of the issues was raised about the CPR training. A lot of them are not feeling very comfortable in their ability to provide support in an emergency other than calling 911. But what happens in the interim? So that is something that has been brought to my attention. And I thought that that is something that maybe we should look into. Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to thank everyone for the information tonight. I hope everyone had a great New Year with their loved ones. And I'm excited about the energy that we have for this year. I think it's going to be great. And I look forward to learning and working together with all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
I just want to say thank you very much for the presentation tonight, not only for quality, but the Service Network team. And I'm really looking forward to participating in the executive board meetings for the upcoming year. So really, really looking forward to that. And thanks for all the work that Jonathan and Dana put in with that. So looking forward to it, have a good night.
Ms. Bernard?
I also want to thank everybody for their presentations. They were so thorough and helpful. And I'm excited for the New Year and the changes that are taking place. Have a good night.
Mr. Lindemir?
Okay, I'm out.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Hey, are you able to hear me? My screen is going kind of crazy and nothing's loading, so not sure if my microphone is working. Yep. Okay, great, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. Like everyone has been saying, thank you for all the presentations today. They've been really informative and really helpful. And I, too, am looking forward to all of our upcoming meetings, especially as we move forward with training some of us newbies. Very much looking forward to all of that. And have a good night, everybody.
Mr. Landsman?
Thank you. I'll put on my camera, although I'm having a really bad hair day. Anyhow, I want to thank Sheila and the leadership team and Dana for working so hard on trying to identify all the things, you know, based on the list I provided, all the different areas that we reach out, we're involved in the community that we're involved in, to see how we might be able to put those extra topics into our, into our calendars for the committee of the whole, for our board meeting, and for the study session. So I want to thank you all for that. As well, I want to thank Marquita and her team. I was watching the cameras, you know, with you guys on camera, which is why I put mine on. But I'm just so amazed at how you guys know so much about quality, metrics, and the QAPIC. It's just absolutely amazing. I mean, I'm a data geek kind of guy and quality and all that. But you just know all these areas like the back of your hand. So I'm just amazed. So thank you all. That's it.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yeah, I would, again, share in the sentiments of my fellow board members of just wanting to thank all of the presenters tonight. We appreciate all the time and effort that you put into the presentations, as well as the work that you do on a daily basis. As we were talking about vaccines, you know, I know some of the board members shared that they have gotten some already. I had my number two today. I know it can be scary. We talked about folks that are a little bit nervous to get them. But I would just say research as much as you can, because I think it's, in my opinion, a good thing to continue to stay safe and healthy. So, good night, thank you. And I think that's got us all, right, Sheila?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a great rest of the week, everyone. Have a great rest of the week, everyone.
We'll see everyone at the board meeting next week.